Okay, Adam.
Okay, here we go. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, May 26, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence, and the flags are behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. So I do have a few announcements before we get started. Well, what a 15 months it's been, and I am pleased to report that this will be our last meeting via Zoom, and we will reinitiate live in-person meetings starting in June. I believe it's June, what is the date? 23rd. So on June 23rd, we will have a live meeting. We're going to do that as a transitional meeting to work some of the bugs out. You'll hear a little later about how we're going to do some of the ability to live cast the meeting. So next meeting and this meeting, we will still allow email comments. If you would like to make a comment for this meeting, you can either email in your name and address. There's two opportunities. First is public comment for the agenda items, and just put the agenda item in the subject and your name and address in the body, and we'll recognize you and turn your microphone on. And there's also a comment period at the end, open for any subject. Just put your name and address for the record, and we'll identify you at the end of the meeting. If you would prefer to send an email in, you can do that, 300 words or less, and to same public comment at any htp.org, and I'll read the email into the record. And we'll do something similar. Next meeting, we will have email comments available and live in-person comments. And then we'll go back to normal at all meetings after next month. That's just to accommodate the transition and get everybody comfortable again. I also like to announce that I anticipate a special meeting on July 7th, and that special meeting would be to hear the land development plan for Wawa in Holland on Roxville Road. It will be a special meeting, and that will be the only subject for that night. And that will be a live in-person meeting at the township building as well, as long as that does get scheduled. So stay tuned for that. Watch the scheduling, sign up for email notifications and what have you to keep, to keep watch on when, when and if that does get scheduled. But we believe that will be scheduled on July 7th, 7:30 PM at the township building. So we don't have any flag or special presentations tonight. So I'll start out with a public comment for agenda items, and pardon me for looking away. I see there are none for the agenda items. So we'll get right into consent items with the approval of the minutes, and Frank.
If there are no objections, I request that the minutes be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, they're approved by unanimous consent. Thank you, Frank. Kim, accounts payable?
Yes, I have the bills list for May 12th, 2021, total all funds, And then I have the bills list for May 26, 2021, total all funds, $747,803.49.
Thank you. Is there any questions or objections? Okay, they're passed by consent as well. Thank you. We're going to get right into new business, and the first part of new business is to consider a preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan for EVV homes on Spring Avenue. Barry?
Sure, thanks, Adam. So this is the property. It's located on the north side of Spring Avenue, which is about 500 feet east of the intersection with Old Jordan Road. The proposal is to subdivide the 3.74 acre parcel into three single-family dwelling lots of 1.16 acres, 0.92 acres, and then 1.04 acres, lot 3. Onlot water supply and sewage disposal will be at the site. The zoning here is R1 and the single-family district, which requires minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet and minimum lot width of 150 square feet. So Bill, if you have an illustration of it so people can see that. I want to comment that the applicant has worked very extensively, working with the neighbors in the area, making sure that the subdivision was approved, and also worked very diligently with the engineer pretending to stormwater management and resolve any outstanding issues. The planning commission of the Northampton Township met on May 11th and approved the plan as submitted. Be honest with you, there's just really no major issues here to consider. So what I'd like to do, if I could, Adam, is make a motion to approve it with certain conditions.
Okay, is there anybody here from?
Yes. Alan Toadvine on behalf of the applicant from Begley, Carlin, and Mandio. Mr. Moore summed it all up rather accurately. Yeah, we're asking for five waivers, and we will comply with all the review letters from your township professionals.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Barry.
Sure. So the motion would be, I move for approval of the EVV home subdivision, SLD 19-4, subject to compliance with the township engineer's review letter dated April 23rd, 2021, the township planning review letter dated April 14, 2021, and a township traffic engineer's review letter dated April 28th, 2021. In addition, it's recommended that the requested waivers be granted and subject to the following conditions. First commission, first condition is the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an escrow agreement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. The second item is a fee in lieu of sidewalks is required, which totals $35,413.20 based on the calculation of the township engineers. There are no sidewalks in this part of town, so it's better to take the fee in lieu of. There's also a fee in lieu of recreation, open space shall be submitted in the amount of $6,026.8 for each new lot for the terms of the land development agreement. The fourth item is the application. The applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP and the Conservation District. Item number five is an easement slash maintenance agreement is required for the shared driveway in a form acceptable to the township solicitor. Responsibility for road and driveway maintenance should be clearly identified to prospective buyers as well as through a disclosure. Last item is the approval of the Bucks County Health Department's required for the onlight sewage and water facilities. So these two, these three properties here will have onlight, will have wells, and also separate fields on the properties.
And the applicant agrees to those conditions.
So, and then, Adam, the only thing I would recommend, I would recommend the approval by this board of this action. I know the developers worked very carefully with the township and worked with the residents to get this approved. As most people know, there's a very strong desire to have new construction in the township, and I think this is an excellent development, so I fully support it.
Okay, that's a motion. And there's a second? Okay, Barry, I'll assume that was your discussion.
That's my discussion. That's all I'm going to say.
Kim?
No, no, I think he summed it up very well.
Thanks. Eileen?
Nothing to go further, sir.
Frank?
I'm fine.
And nothing, no comments from me other than I appreciate you guys working with the residents down there and the neighbors, et cetera. So, okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Consider a preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan for Stony Ford Ridge subdivision, Toner Homes, down at Stony Ford and East Village Road. Pardon me. Frank?
Do we have to open a hearing for this or not? Adam?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to open a hearing for this?
For this one? I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless somebody, unless somebody believes otherwise.
Now, I just, I'm sure. The proposed development is located at 691 Stony Ford Road and consists approximately 5.87 acres in the R3 multifamily residential district. The parcel contains an existing family dwelling that has been converted into three apartments that will be subdivided as a separate lot 1. Lot 1 will remain as previously, as previously described above. The other nine lots of the 10 will each contain a single-family residential dwelling with associated improvements. Proposed lot 1 has an access with an existing driveway on Stony Ford and Buck Roads. Proposed lots 2, 3, and 4 will have driveways within, with access on Stony Ford Road. Proposed lots 5 through 10 will have driveways that accessed each village road. This property was the subject of a previous zoning hearing board application for townhouses, which was opposed by the neighbors. As a result, this by right plan was submitted to construct single-family detached dwellings. Does anyone here for the, on this plan that wants to discuss it?
Good evening, Frank. This is Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bob Toner, who I believe is also present together with our engineer, Vince Vervanti.
Please proceed, Ed.
Again, I think you summarized the status of the application accurately, Frank. As you mentioned, there was an effort six, eight months ago to look at a different development scenario, which nobody seemed to be favor. So we've significantly modified the plan to what you see depicted on your screen and which you summarized. We've gone through the typical review process with your consultants, and most recently with your planning commission, the plan has been submitted, commented upon, revised, and resubmitted. Most recently, your planning commission did recommend approval of the plan, subject to our continued compliance with the review comments of your professionals. And we've also had the opportunity to talk to your administration about the various fees that would be accessible based on the number of lots, et cetera, and we are in accordance with your township administration's recommendations on those fees. So I think we're in a good position and ready to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, with that information, I think I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thanks, please do, Frank.
I move for the approval of the Stony Ford Ridge subdivision preliminary final plan of subdivision and land development, SLD 21-1, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates Review Letter dated May 18th, 2021, the Penone Associates Review Letter dated May 11th, 2021, and the McMahon Associates Review Letter dated May 18th, 2021. I am recommending that the requested waivers be granted as the planning commission has recommended to us, and I recommend that the approval be subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall enter, number one, the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an escrow agreement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. A fee in lieu of sidewalks will be required totaling $4,896.64 based upon the calculations of the township engineer. A fee in lieu of tree replacements shall be required in the amount of $22,575 based on the calculations of the township engineer in accordance with the applicant's proposed tree replacement plan. If the tree replacement plan is amended, the required fee shall be adjusted accordingly. A fee in lieu of recreation and open space shall be submitted in the amount of $6,393.7 for each new lot per the terms of the land development agreement. This shall not apply to the lot within the, with the existing dwelling, which is lot 1. The applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, the Conservation District, PennDOT, and the municipal authority. Further, approval is granted for submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Frank, any additional comment?
No.
And I would say, Mr. Chairman, that those conditions as outlined by Mr. O'Donnell are acceptable to the applicant.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate that. Eileen, any comment?
The only comment is, I don't, in reading all of the letters in there, was there anything about having shared driveways? So there wasn't each driveway going out to Stony Ford? Has that been looked at? Or had the traffic engineer decided that wasn't what needed to be, or what?
All the above, Eileen. That's correct.
Okay, so it was talked about, but now it's not.
Agreed. By our consultant, your consultant, all that, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's awesome.
Kim?
Yeah, I'm good.
Same, same here. I don't have any comments. I think it's pretty straightforward. It looks, it looks nice. Okay.
I just have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barry.
You're hurting my feelings.
Sorry, it's, it's, it's easy.
Two comments I just have. So, Bill, if you could bring the plan up one more time, please. I appreciate it. I guess my question pertains to lot 1, and I wasn't sure. So lot 1 is is a large lot that with the existing structures on it? If I could ask, what is the plan to do with those structures there? Was there any feedback? Are you going to leave as is or make changes to it or?
I think Bob Toner is probably in the best position, Barry, to cover on that. Bob, did you unmute yourself?
We don't hear you, Bob.
Sorry, yes, that'll be left as is.
Okay, is that three units today, Mr. Toner, or is that, so remaining is three rental units?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Last other question I have. What was the fee for the tree replacement program?
$22,575.
Okay. The only thing I, I just think that's a lot of money.
So do we.
So do I.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would ask this board, I mean, I, if you know, I, this is right down the street from where I live. I just think that's a very excessive amount of fee to charge for the tree program. I agree with everything else here, but I think I would propose that we modify that to maybe a fee of, you know, maybe $10,000 or $7,500. I mean, these trees are not, you know, sycamore trees are 200 years old. And, yeah, I think in all fairness to people, I think we have to be, I think it's just over the top, to be honest, in my personal opinion. I don't remember still about that.
Isn't there a calculation usually done by the engineer?
Yeah, yes, there was a calculation done and discussed with, with Mr. Vervanti on the call as well. It is straight from the fee schedule. So it's just the sheer volume of trees that are being cleared on this property. I'm sure there can be some sort of discussion on it, but, you know, it just, as the facts are stated, that is the calculation that was done.
Yeah, and I guess my only thought here is for my board members is that if this was a beautiful park setting with beautiful sycamores, things like that, or oak trees, things like this, the woods is really a lot of odd trees there and things like that. It just seems very excessive to me.
Barry, then maybe, then maybe what we need to do is the next time our fee schedule is up, you could make a motion to change that on the fee schedule, but I don't think that we can start changing each land development that comes before us that is different because of what somebody thinks trees are and trees aren't. I mean, Amanda took the, how many trees there were, it was very straightforward. It wasn't where she said, okay, you know, if it's a sycamore, we're going to charge you $5, and if it's this tree, we're going to charge you $100. You know, they don't do that. It's a flat fee, and this is what the calculation is. So maybe at the next time that we do the fee schedule, you could make some changes to that, bring up a motion. So the next time this comes about, that maybe we can have it, but I don't think we should start going from land development to land development. That's my opinion.
Okay, no, the only reason I would say, Eileen, is that, in fact, I do think you should go land development, land development. Every development's slightly different. And, you know, I could see if this is a park-like setting, and there's beautiful spectacular trees we want to replace, but, you know, $22,000 for the trees there is just ridiculous, in my opinion. But, you know, you know, I'm just saying, I, in the spirit of being fair, I would try to recommend a fee maybe half of that. I, it's just, it's $22,000. I walked through those woods there. It's just, it's all garbage trees. I mean, it's just nothing.
So we, we do have a motion and a second, and so I think what you're asking for is to modify the motion. So I'd have to go back to Frank and ask if you're interested, consider modifying the motion, and then we'd have to ask the second if they would be okay with that, and then we would go through again.
My concern is, we have, we have a fee schedule, and I think that maybe those issues are, you know, could be raised. Wasn't raised by the applicant. Seems to me that, you know, we, it's really difficult to try and do that at the last minute at a meeting here. So I do not support changing a motion.
So the, so the motion stands as, as called, and we'll take the vote from here. I don't have any additional comment. I do think that the tree schedule should be reviewed. I think it, I think it is a burden, and it doesn't seem to make, well, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense all over, but it is what it is today. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will move. I'm sorry, Barry, I did not mean to skip you.
Sorry, Adam. Don't worry about it.
Well, you know, when, when people come in and out, it changes the order, and I was following the order, and then you disappeared. So, thank you. Okay, next, we have Consider bids for sidewalk and ADA improvements along Second Street Pike, Eileen.
Yes. Bids were opened for our Richborough sidewalk improvement program, and the work will consist of installing or replacing sections of sidewalk along Second Street Pike between 332 and the Flower Produce Shop. The project also includes installation of underground pipe to accommodate future decorative streetlights. There were two parts of the bid proposal, a base bid and an option bid. The option bid proposal includes work on four properties on the east side of Second Street Pike between the Sunoco Station and Addisfield Church. They are the yellow, I think they are the yellow. Is that correct, Bill? Yes, I think they're the yellow. These properties have steeper grades, and a small retaining wall is needed to be built. G and B Construction Incorporated of Willa Grove was the lowest responsible bidder with a base bid of $484,815 and an option bid of $150,384, $150,384.50, which I wonder what the 50 cents is for, with an estimated contract total of $635,199.50. This project is being funded by grant funds, fees paid by developers in lieu of constructing sidewalks, and an appropriation from the Capital Projects Fund. May I read the motion, sir?
Please.
I move to award a contract to G and B Construction, Inc. of Willa Grove, PA at a toted, total estimated project cost of $635,199.50 based on unit pricing for construction of sidewalks along portions of Second Street Pike and Newtown Richborough Road, and to authorize the township manager to execute all required contract documents for this project.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Eileen, anything further?
No, I'm glad to see that we were able to get easements, so we'll be able to go forward with this project.
Thanks, Bill, for the visuals. I think that's helpful when we do a motion like this. Kim, any comment?
No, I'm very excited about making downtown Richborough more walkable.
Thanks. Frank?
Well, yeah, of course. Well, I have no objection to the sidewalks here. I continue my objection to the use of individual bricks as a decorative element for these sidewalks. I think in the long run, it just doesn't hold up.
Thanks, Frank. Barry, any comment?
Well, I like the bricks, so I'll support the bricks and vote in favor of this.
Okay, I don't have any specific comment on this, other than I would say that, you know, it would be nice to, maybe in the future, we can look at other options around the bricks that are slightly different, but that's, that's for another day.
Is it, is it possible to change if we, once we start building and we see how beautiful the front of the township building is with those bricks that are, you know, that are cement with a stamper? And if we find out that maybe that can be used after talking with the construction company, is it possible to change that during, you know, once it's accepted, or is, once it's like this, that's it?
I'll let Bob comment on that.
Certainly something we can talk to the contractor about.
Okay.
I don't know how it will affect the bid price. It is a unit contract, unit pricing contract, but we can certainly talk about that. It's not substantial. I don't think it would be a substantial enough change to have to bring, to have to generate a new, new bid.
Okay.
And we bid it.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion's over. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I, I will, you know, I was going to vote no, but with the qualification that Bob does that to see if there are other options, I will vote yes.
Thanks, Frank. So motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, everybody. Next, we have Barry. Consider authorization to advertise amendments to the zoning and land development ordinances.
Sure, thanks, Adam. So this is going to be, the board of supervisors working with the township and Mike Solomon, the zoning officer. We're trying to take a common sense approach to a lot of the existing ordinances that we have. What we're authorizing here is a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, August 25th, just to discuss these items in greater detail. A lot of the, the mission here is that we have a certain number of ordinances that require residents to go before the zoning hearing board, and, you know, 95% of the time, they're approved. So we're trying to avoid that to save some money and save some time for people. Some of the examples I have here, for example, is that many of the homes being built today have a larger attached garage. And today, the existing zoning hearing board requires anything above 900 square feet, you must come back to the zoning hearing board for approval. So, you know, and then there's a 1,200 square foot requirement for detached garage. So all we're saying is just trying to do a more common sense approach to it. I won't go into all the details here. Some of the other things are size of sheds where there's a shed today. If you have anything over 180 square feet, you need to go back to the zoning hearing board. We're just saying that probably 120 square feet, I'm sorry, 120 square feet is more acceptable. I'm sorry, 240 square feet is more acceptable. So we're just trying to simplify, save some money for residents, and try to minimize the amount of people being forced to go to the zoning hearing board. So I have a motion. If I could read it, Adam?
Please.
So I move to authorize a public hearing on Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, at 7:30 PM for the consideration of ordinance, amending the Northampton Township zoning ordinance, specifically Chapter 27 and the subdivision and land development ordinance, Chapter 22, for the purpose of amending sections related to detached garages, unenclosed porticoes, sheds, residential recreational services, removal of topsoil, visibility at intersections, storage of junk vehicles, keeping of livestock, progress surface ratios, stormwater management, administrative procedures and permits, amendments, penalties, signs, and lighting. So it's a very comprehensive review. And I really think that this may be a model for all the townships to, to follow.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Barry?
No, I think it's good. I'm very pleased with it. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Frank.
I would just say, I, I'm really glad to see the township administration going through these ordinances. I've talked about that for a while, and I believe that the and I believe that the changes here really benefit our residents. I'm just glad that we're moving forward with it.
Thanks, Frank. Kim?
Um, yeah, I think this is really good because it's really cleaning some things up. One of the issues, the storage of junk vehicles where, um, uh, people have to get rid of their junk vehicles after a month instead of three months. Um, I've had residents complain about this to me, so I'm really happy that we're moving on this.
Thanks, Kim. Eileen?
Yes, and also the, uh, the ordinance about livestock. Um, it is making, what was it intended of not just the, um, CR, but going to CR and EP and the AR. So, it, it's having everything, not just making it open, but also making it more concise. So our residents don't have questions.
Thanks, Eileen. Uh, I'm very much, uh, for it as well. I'm, I'm really happy with the, uh, outcome. I think anytime we can reduce the burden on our residents to do more routine things and not have to go through a lot of process, uh, that's good. Um, and, you know, continuous improvement. I mean, this is modernization. This is kind of looking at what the reality is and, and acting on it, and I think we're doing that here. So, uh, uh, very much in favor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next, Kim, uh, consider a resolution, uh, authorizing a grant application for a crosswalk on Newtown Richborough Road.
Yes. Um, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, D C E D, through its Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, has a grant program that funds the renovation and development of linear public facilities that include trails and related support facilities. In two thousand nineteen, the township contracted with the Bucks County Planning Commission to prepare a master trail and bicycle plan that outlines a vision for improving the quality of life in the township through the development of a comprehensive township-wide trail and bicycle facilities network. As part of the implementation of this network, the township is proposing connections. Bill, would you put that picture up? Um, from Fur Drive to the Northampton Township Civic Center through Tyler Park. Um, the first component of the project would provide a crosswalk on Newtown Richborough Road, three thirty-two, at the intersection with Fur Drive. From there, the pedestrian would access, um, would parallel Route three thirty-two to the number one lane trail in Tyler Park. A second component of the project would be construct a trail to connect the same number one lane trail in Tyler Park to an existing trail in the Civic Center. Um, the estimated cost of this project is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. The township will request the maximum grant amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If the grant is awarded, the balance of forty-eight thousand will be available from the Capital Reserve Fund. Um, the township's contribution exceeds the fifteen percent matching requirement. This, this grant application requires a resolution from the municipal governing body authorizing submission and designating an official to execute the application and other documents related to any grant award. Um, we will be completing a paved path between the Civic Center and Number One Trail, if you see that on there. Um, it's about six hundred and seventy-five feet long. Um, and our residents, this is going to, to, uh, make it so that our residents over, um, on, uh, behind Fur will be able to cross safely to, uh, uh, Tyler State Park and to our municipal park. So with that, could I make a, um, uh, a, a resolution?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash fifteen, authorizing the township administration to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through its Greenways Trails and, uh, Recreation Program for a grant to fund the construction of a pedestrian crosswalk at Newtown Richborough Road and Fur Drive, and the construction of a trail connecting the Civic Center to Tyler State Park, and to authorize the township manager to execute all contract documents required for this project.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion. Anything further, Kim?
Um, I just want to say that, um, we are, we're, uh, joining with DC and R, um, and hopefully, this would, this is going to make it easier for us to get this grant, since we're, um, joining with, um, DC and R to do it. And I think it's going to make our township more walkable, easier to get to Tyler State Park and to our Civic Center. It's, it's just a win-win situation. I'm just keeping my fingers crossed that we get this grant.
Yeah, excellent. Frank?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that Kim said. Uh, you know, it's an opportunity for our residents on the south side of Newtown Richborough Road to actually get into the park instead of just looking at it from across the street. So, uh, uh, we need to do more of this. So, I, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're doing this. I hope that the effort that we're, we have also talked about in the past to, uh, connect that trail under the bridge that, uh, you know, that goes, that, that goes over the Shammany Creek, uh, from the south side to the north side of the park eventually gets through, because I think that's important as well.
Thanks, Frank. Eileen?
Uh, does this construction include signage, uh, for when that is done? Anybody know? Um,
Well, there'd be signage at the, uh, intersection, uh, with Fur Drive. Uh, that would be required by PennDOT.
Okay.
And then we would have to put some signs, I think maybe at least one, uh, directing people along Newtown Richborough Road to, uh, Number One Trail Lane.
Okay.
I don't know that there's any others. Well, probably at our Civic Center, we, uh, where it, where it, um, goes into Tyler, we should probably put a sign that says Tyler State Park straight ahead.
Okay.
And that's going to be a flashing warning system.
Yeah, the intersection crossing will be, will most likely be a flashing warning signal. It's ultimately up to PennDOT, but that's what our traffic engineer is recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Barry?
No, I think it's an excellent idea. Um, I guess I'm, I'm not trying to think whether we should put bricks along this at all, or probably not, I guess, or...
Take the bricks out of the sidewalks, Barry, and use them.
True, 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 I call.
Particularly on a township road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I think it's an excellent idea. Whoever thought of it had to be very smart, but, um, no, I think it's good. Go for it. Let's do it. I approve it.
Well, you, did, did that hurt to pat yourself on the back there, Barry?
I didn't say anything, Eileen. I didn't say anything.
This was Barry's idea from the beginning.
No, it was a team idea, team, 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 but we're all team. So it's all good.
Uh, I just got texted from a resident to say, I asked Barry about that. No comments, uh, other than, um, I'm glad to see that we continue on our, our slow move forward to continue for connectivity from trail to trail, neighborhoods, et cetera, and, uh, like Kim said, making it a little bit more walkable and bike-rideable, et cetera. So, it's a slow process, but you have to start and just kind of keep moving, and that's what we're doing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Uh, next, we have consider a new police collective bargaining agreement. Eileen?
This is exciting. Yes, I'm talking. The administration has reached a tentative settlement on a new collective bargaining agreement with the Northampton Township Police Benevolent Association, representing our police officers. To finalize the agreement, we must ratify the terms and conditions of this proposal. The proposed contract is for a five-year term with wage increases of three percent to three point five percent, negotiating a new wage scale for officers hired after January two thousand and twenty-one, changes in on-call pay, a cost of living increase in their annual clothing al, allowance, a small increase in the township's contribution to the deferred compensation program, and one additional year of post-retirement health care with a modified post-retirement health care plan for officers over age sixty-five. The township team and the PBA negotiating team met numerous times to discuss proposals and counter-proposals and negotiated, in my opinion, a fair contract avoiding arbitration. Both teams should be congratulated for negotiating this new agreement with the utmost professionalism. May I read the motion?
Please.
I move to ratify the terms and conditions of a new collective bargaining agreement between Northampton Township and the Northampton Township Police Benevolent Association as per the conditions delineated in the memorandum of April the first, two thousand twenty-one.
We have a second? We have a motion, a second. Eileen, any additional comment?
I just recommend that we ratify this agreement. Um, I think it's fair on both sides. It's very difficult sometimes when we think that we have the best police, uh, in the county, and we know what they do, and so therefore, I'm glad I'm not on the negotiating team and that we leave that for our administration who tries not to bring a motion into it and looks at it financially and what's best for our residents and what's best for the police. So I, um, recommend that we ratify.
Thanks, Eileen. Kim?
Uh, yes, I want to say I'm very pleased about this contract. It's fair. And, um, I do want to say, I, I, you know, I appreciate our police. They do a wonderful job, but I want to give a special shout out to Bob Pellegrino because he worked especially hard, and he kept us up to date, let us know what was going on, and, um, he just was very level-headed, and he made sure everybody got a fair deal. And I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Kim. Frank?
I really don't have anything to add beyond what, uh, Eileen and Kim have said.
Thanks, Frank. Barry?
No, I agree. Eileen, Kim, I think you guys said it very well. So, thank you.
Yep, um, I, I'll just echo. Thanks. Thanks, Bob and team. Uh, I think fairness is, is, is a core value of ours, and I think that, that everybody believes this is a good, fair um, employment contract, and you guys did a great job with that.
May I, uh, may I say something, Adam?
Please.
I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, publicly thank the PBA negotiating committee. Um, they were certainly formidable adversaries in the negotiations. Uh, we met probably twelve or fifteen times. Um, each time we inched toward a, a deal, but they were, they were unbelievably professional, and we did not let emotion get, get the better of either side. Um, we spent hours talking about different issues, and they are really to be commended for the way they handled this contract negotiation. It's probably the best one uh, that, that I've ever been in.
Now, that's great to hear. It's, it's, it's a great, uh, it's a great compliment, and that really just says what our police force is all about.
Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll get into liaison reports, but at this point, I would just like to remind residents, if you'd like to make the public comment, please email uh, publiccomment@nhtwp.org. And, uh, no need to put anything in the subject, but please put your name and address in the body, and we'll recognize you, um, when the time comes. Please do that, uh, now, so we don't miss anybody when it gets to be the very end. And I'll start with, uh, Kim.
Well, my first report is definitely my happiest. We got, I get to announce that the senior center reopened to the community on May eleventh. Following the guidelines for wearing masks and safe distancing hasn't prevented the ability to offer many of the activities that used to be available. Currently, most of the exercise classes are up and running, and a newly created class, On Your Feet, started last week. The book club and coloring club we're meeting virtually are now being held at the center. Um, there's scheduled billiard time and on the newly cup, uh, recovered pool tables, and the golf leg, uh, golf league is in full swing with the bocce league ready to roll by the end of June. There's a trip planned for Hundred and Hills in October and the American Music in December. Um, the current hours of operation are Monday through Friday, nine to three-thirty. I just want to say that the staff at the senior center, along with the administration, really made this happen, and um, I just want to say, our seniors are so happy to be back at the center. There was a lot of joy there last week, and we are just so happy to be back and running. Um, so that's it about the senior center. All good. Uh, now Parks and Rec. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we've received many positive comments about the Bike rodeo, which was held on May sixteenth. I know that the police and Parks and Rec are already planning the next one. Um, it was, it's a great community, and it was a great event. Um, we also had a great turnout for the community yard sale this past weekend with over eighty, um, homes participating. Uh, before I provide you with, uh, any more lists of recreation events, I want to provide an update on the Miracle League, uh, playground project. The township and the Miracle League, between grants and fundraising efforts, have raised enough money to start construction in the late fall. Fundraising efforts are still going strong, and there's still opportunity to support the project. The number one, uh, the number, the first annual Miracle League golf outing is scheduled for next Friday, June fourth, at the Country Club. And there's still availability. If you want to golf or sponsor a hole, please give Nancy O'Callaghan a call. Okay, now I'm going to go right down the calendar to give you some events to mark down. Monday is Memorial Day. Not only it is a day to honor those who have served our country, but it is a day for many uh, that we consider the first day of summer season. And for Parks and Rec, it is the first day for the Swim Club to open. Hours are from one to five. This is one day where we open it to the public for a five-dollar guest fee. And if you are military or first responders, there's no charge. Monday's forecast is beautiful, so take advantage and visit, visit the Swim Club at the Northampton, um, Country Club. Next, Tuesday, June first, is the last day you can receive a special discount for flower show tickets. Um, you'll need to, uh, purchase them and put them online, but it's definitely worth a seven-dollar discount. Um, there's also great, other great, um, bargains there for other tickets that you might want to visit this summer. Um, you'll also want to mark your calendar for June fifth, which is the date for the annual fishing derby held at Tyler State Park. This is absolutely the favorite special event for many, so you might want to try it, too. Um, and new this year is a cornhole tournament on Father's Day weekend, Ju, June nineteenth. Start practicing, and don't forget to register. This will be a popular event with, uh, a lot of great competition. And please, check out our summer brochure. It came out a couple weeks ago, and there's tons of information in it. And, oh, one more thing, I just have to bring this up. Please, people who are walking their dogs in the park, you need to clean up after them. There's lots of, we provide bags there, there, and I just want to tell you that it is uns, not only is it unsanitary to let your dog, you know, do that without picking it up, but it's against the law. There's an ordinance, and it is enforceable with a one-thousand-dollar fine. So clean up there for your dog, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Good advice. Uh, Frank?
The, uh, municipal authority will open both the drive-through and the lobby on Tuesday, June first. I'm glad to see that happening finally. Uh, that's the good news. The bad news for some people is that, uh, as of July first, the municipal authority will resume collection of delinquent accounts and will resume shut-offs. Uh, they have already been sending out notices to those individuals that are in arrears on their water and sewer bills and are working with many of them to come up with a, uh, with a payment plan that, that they're, they're able to do. The last thing they want to do is shut anybody off, believe me. So, that's, that's ongoing. Uh, they will continue to go out and reach out to people between now and July so that people do not have to pay, uh, or do not have to pay additional penalties and will not be paying penalties at all for the period, uh, I, I think since last February, from February of two thousand twenty through, uh, the end of June thirtieth. I I think since last February, from February of 2020 through the end of June 30th. For the Veterans Advisory Commission, one important thing is that as of Monday, Memorial Day, at 9:00 a.m., the we will have the traditional Memorial Day commemoration in person at Dombowski Park at the, you know, at at the at the corner of, you know, of Newtown Richborough Road and Second Street Pike. Please come out. We are following the governor's guidelines, which basically says that if you're outside, you don't need to wear a mask. Anyone who feels that they would want to wear a mask certainly is welcome to do so. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank. Very exciting. This will be our first true live community event in quite some time. And it would be great to see everybody out.
And we do have, just I might add that we were fortunate in getting a really excellent speaker for this meeting. It will be Major General Tom Matthews.
Excellent. Thanks, Frank. Barry?
Sure. Thanks, Adam. I just had a few things. Some of the pending projects coming forward, it's in World Flavors is in the business commons to come before the township. There's also a redevelopment of 840 Second Street Pike in Richborough. There's another land development in the industrial park by Blair Corporation. And then Advent Church is looking at a subdivision on Williams Mill Road, looking to add two additional lots there for residential. One thing I want to mention again for a resident's benefit, it's tentatively scheduled right now for July 7th to have a special meeting of board of supervisors to discuss the Wawa land development plan. That's July 7th. And then ongoing things at the township, the Spring Mill Country Club. The town has to go in very fast there and selling. Waverly subdivision is doing very well. I think it's going to be construction of House soon. And then the giant in the former Murray Shopping Center, they're originally targeting December 2021. I think we'll probably see that in early 2022, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Eileen?
Yes. First, the library's annual appeal letter will be going out soon. Please think about the wonderful way the library and the library staff kept our residents connected to the library during the pandemic. They were totally closed for a short time, and when we could not access access the physical plant, they were creative and found a way for us to access their wonderful material as well as their excellent staff. Thank them with a generous donation. We are looking for some special people to join the library board. With the light at the end of the tunnel, with COVID coming closer, the library is looking for residents to join those already on the board to come up with a new vision for our library, library. If you are interested, please contact Lisa Russo at the administration building to get an application. As Frank said about our Memorial Day, I am so excited to be able to attend our Memorial Day service in person at Dombowski Park. I will still be wearing a mask, so if you feel uncomfortable, please wear yours. There will be no mask streaming. And I am very, very excited and looking forward to seeing all of our residents. If you haven't seen it, the front of the township building has been reconstructed for safety, and it looks great. Thanks to Paul and his team at Public Works for a fantastic job. The slogan contest for the 300th anniversary celebration is underway. We have some very creative people in our township. Entries can be received until August the 15th, 2021. And last, I am the liaison for our SWIP SWAC for our Trash Consortium. And I want all residents to understand that we hear you about the missed trash recycling and yard waste collections. We are getting reports of entire streets and developments being missed. We are, our administration is in communications with our hauler. And after a meeting of our Trash Consortium, each member, Upper Southampton, Lower South, and Northampton decided that we will be contacting the SCARO to inform them of some penalties. So stay tuned to see if we can get something done so that we don't have 25 different streets in one day being missed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Just a couple of quick things from me. First of all, it's been up until this afternoon extremely dry, as you've all noticed, and the fire department has been quite busy with mulch, brush, and field fires. Be really careful about having a fire and disposing of your fire pit ashes that, you know, many homes use in their backyards. And I ask all those that are smokers to please be very careful about how you discard your cigarettes. We've had a bunch of fires up on Newtown Richborough Road that have all been attributed to to someone driving by and throwing a lit cigarette out. It's very, very dry and it's been quite windy, and it can cause it can cause a lot of damage. Secondly, I'm also very excited about the Memorial Day. I hope to see everybody there. I echo Eileen and Frank, you know, the the most common question we get are, you know, do I have to wear a mask? And my comment is, wear one if you feel comfortable. And I think there will be a, it'll be comfortable for everybody there. It'll be nice, hopefully a nice day out in the open. And really excited to just get, you know, back to business. I heard today, and I'll just share that the governor said this today, that 70% of the residents over 18 have their first shot. And if that's the case, we're well on our way to having the 70% vaccination rate that we need for the tire mask order to be lifted. So get out there. Let's get to that number. And I'm hoping in the next month or two, things will really start to get back to normal. That's all I have today. Before we go to the manager's report, I'd just like to make mention, if you would like to comment during public comment, please email nhtwp-publiccomment@nhtwp.org and put your name and address in the body so that we can recognize you. Suggest you do that now so that we are ready to call you when the time comes. Bob? You're on mute?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Solicitor's report. Mr. Pizzo. Hello, Joe.
Good evening. I spared you all, as you know, from the pre-meeting, I'm I'm a little under the weather, so I spared you all the the visual of me coughing and sneezing for the last hour. I should report that the board met in executive session immediately prior to this evening's meeting. Were approximately 50 minutes present for the executive session, where the five supervisors, the township manager, the assistant township manager, township engineer, and me. Several matters of pending litigation were discussed, as well as one matter of potential litigation. No official actions taken during the executive session, and no official action was required at this evening's meeting. Other than that, just to wish everyone in the township, and of course, all of you, a very happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Joan. We wish you get well.
Thank you.
Yes, for sure. Amanda, engineers report.
Nothing to report this evening. I just wanted to say that I'm excited to hopefully get back in person to a little bit more normalcy and wish everybody a safe and enjoyable Memorial Day.
Thank you. Just on that note, before we get to public comment, I will add that we, when you come back to the township building next month, you'll probably see some areas of boundaries and things like that. We do want to make sure as we transition into full public meetings that people do feel safe. So we'll have some guidelines and some things in the room, but it will be very, very close to normal, I believe. When I say normal, I mean pre-pandemic. So I believe we have one public comment. Bill, could you turn on Joe Johnston? Hi, Joe. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
We hear you, and I think we see your ceiling, maybe. I don't know. That's okay. Okay, hi, Joe. Can you just give your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Joe Johnston, 41 Grant Drive in Holland. I heard earlier tonight about applying for a trail grant for $250,000 with approximately $48,000 match to come out of the capital reserve funds, and I'd like to know what the balance is of that fund, if that's okay. And, okay, I'll continue. You can answer my questions at the end, hopefully.
Joe, I don't know if we have that handy, but if we don't, we'll get it to you.
Thank you. Okay, so I I just want to do a little history on the rail trail real quick. You know, February 2020, the township supervisors approved the trail and bicycle plan that was formulated by the county planners. In the course of drafting that plan, there was no public surveys. The meetings between the Northampton Township and Bucks County Planning officials were held privately. We had two opportunities to to speak on a 284-page document. We got a total of six minutes each to talk on that over the course of two meetings, three and three. Oh, and and there was an open house at Northampton Library where Bucks County planners were there to address residents' concerns, and I can tell you from my experience and from speaking with others, I can tell you that they had similar experiences, that their concerns were met with smiles and shrugs. So nothing was accomplished by any of those instances. Okay, so poor communications between Bucks County Planning, the township officials, and the residents is still continuing. Now, I I sat here and I listened to the whole meeting. We talked about trails. There was no mention of the Northampton section of the rail trail. But if I go on, the residents who who are in favor of the trail, I I read that the funding got approved to do the engineering from Bristol Road to Churchill Nature Center. I don't understand why, I'm assuming that they didn't communicate that to the supervisors or else I would have heard it tonight. So again, the poor communication continues. So let me read something. This is from the Bucks County Planning Commission Minutes, Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, Executive Director's Report. Mr. Stone reminded the board that the staff had formed the Citizens Advisory Design Committee for the Chaminde Greenway Trail Phase Two Dark Hollow Park. So they're willing to to meet with the neighbors and we're as, I want to ask this board tonight to formulate, to form a citizens advisory committee. I understand that the township manager, the engineer, and the police chief are on, could head that committee, but you need some residents on it too. Can't be finding information out. You don't even know, but apparently somebody else knows. I know because I I attended the DVR PC meeting. It was approved, but I didn't hear it tonight. So this has got to stop. It's not fair. Mr. Chairman, you said fairness is our core value of this board. That's what you said tonight. So I'm asking you, in a spirit of fairness and open government, to please form this committee, okay? The first step would be to notify adjacent homeowners of the pending project. That has never been done since 2002, when we first heard about the rail trail. That has never been done. There's never been written notification mailed to the residents adjacent to this proposed project. So there's people out there who still don't know about it. Okay, and they need to, they need to hear it from 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 you. And again, form the committee, and we'll just take it from there. But, oh, and the other thing is, we talked about trails in the DVR PC. Let me backtrack a minute. Okay, we're talking about sidewalk, we're sidewalks in Richborough and stuff like that. We're investing millions of dollars in Richborough. Okay, we have the opportunity, Upper Southampton, from Towne and Park, there's a bike lane on Second Street Pike. It stops at Bristol Road, okay? If you go up Second Street Pike from Bristol Road to Richborough, it's wide enough for a bike lane. It's already there. Okay, all you need to do is stencil the bicycle in there, and there needs to be a bike shadow from Bristol Road about 100 yards north before it opens up. It's a little tight right there, but it's also a bike shadow in Southampton approaching Bristol Road. So you got a small shadow here in Southampton, one in Northampton, and as soon as this trail opens in Southampton Township, okay, people can come out of Towne and Park if they so choose and take the road, a a designated bike lane, right into Richborough and spend their dollars, okay? The county considered that a low priority, which is insane, okay? It's going to take, they even said it would take four to five years before they could complete the trail on the tracks, if it ever goes that far, to completion, okay? A bike lane, it's already there. It could be done in a ma- in a month, okay? But you would need the money, approval from PennDOT, okay? But the opportunity is there to get people in Richborough and spend money. And and let's get some something back for our investment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Joan. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate hearing from you. I don't believe we have any other comments tonight. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.